Good evening, everyone. If I could please ask you to make sure your phones are on silent at this time. We'll be starting the meeting in about one minute. The time is now 7:00 PM, and I would like to call the City of East Point Regular Meeting on Thursday, September 20th, 2022. And we will start this evening off with invocation, followed by the pledge allegiance. So if everyone could please rise, it will be given by Councilman Curly this evening.
Our gracious heavenly Father, we would ask that you would be with us tonight, and may we honor your name. We ask that you would bring our city together through the turmoil that we're going through. We want to do what you would ask us to do, though tonight, the decisions we make are not going to be ours, but what we would please you to do. We ask these things in your heavenly name, Jesus the Living Christ. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we are going to move on to a proclamation. Our proclamation is in celebration of Constitution Week, which goes from September 17th to September 23rd, and this evening it will be read by Councilman DeMonica.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protam. All right, City of East Point's proclamation for Constitution Week, September 17th through 23rd, 2022. Whereas it is the privilege and duty of all Americans to commemorate the 235th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies and activities, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuance of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore it be resolved that we, the City Council of the City of East Point, do hereby proclaim that September 17th through 23rd, 2022, shall be known as Constitution Week in the City of East Point, and urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all rights and responsibilities with which that privilege involves. Proclaim this 20th day of September, 2022.
Thank you, Councilman. Now we'll move on to the first item on our agenda, which is roll call.
Councilmember DeMonica?
Here.
Mayor Protam Lucido?
Here.
Councilmember Curly?
Here.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Item number two is approval of the agenda. There is one item I would like to add to the agenda this evening. If we could add an item K, and that is just a discussion and possible motion on our mask policy.
Mask?
Yeah, our mask policy.
All right. Madam Mayor, I would approve the agenda with the addition. So moved.
I'll support that.
That's motion and support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonica?
Yes.
Now we're moving on to the third item, which is the hearing of the public.
Madam Mayor Protam, sorry, just one item, and I think probably the most fair, but I'd like to just mention it now for approval of the agenda, just for next meeting. If we can add the two sets of minutes from the last meeting on to the next agenda to approve. We didn't move them over from the last meeting.
Oh, yes.
That was also no more.
I don't think we need a motion for that. Okay. So we'll move on to item three, which is going to be the hearing of the public. So at this time, anyone that wishes to be heard will be given three minutes to speak over at the podium. If you could just please state your name before you start, I would appreciate it.
I'm Kevin Ford. I've been a resident of East Point since the '95 or '96. One of those years.
Thank you.
So I wrote some things down because I've been in denial a long time about my memory, '67, remembering stuff. Last meeting I made here was maybe about four meetings ago, and we were talking about the trash. And I walk, my wife and I, we walk or ride bikes in the community sometimes. So this last trip, we went from Eight Mile from where we stayed, from Roslin to Grashit. And I was disturbed about property owners. First of all, we was talking about trash. And we went to Japan for two weeks, and we probably should adopt some of their values. They don't have any trash, any paper. They carry their own bags. They carry their own hand towels. I know that's out the way, but I was really impressed. But when I walked down that avenue, it was like trash, particularly that gas station on Emile and Eight Mile. I'm like, shouldn't the owners or the business owners take care of their property, you know? So I think that need to be addressed. So when we started to walk towards Grashit, a lot of people that owned property, there was trees, we had to duck down just to walk down. So any questions? I know we have a department that rides around in the city and look for stuff like that. Even in our neighborhoods, I believe we have to complain first before we can get somebody. Shouldn't it be a department just doing something about that issue? We couldn't even walk freely because of people not taking care of their properties, and I was really embarrassed about that. And I used to brag about East Point all the time. Seemed like we've got relaxed or something, huh? So I thought I would bring that up. And one more thing, since I got three minutes, it's probably over. And I didn't bring my water bill, but I wanted to, I wanted to break it down, but I don't have it because like the water bill was $60 and all these other fees. It's just ridiculous. My water bill was $2.40 a month. I can't even water my grass for twice a week. Anyway, I just wanted to mention that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. And if you would like to email us about the water bills, we'll be able to get back to you, or we can try to reply during our comments at the end.
Good evening. Mary Hall Raifert, East Point. I am really excited to see that council stood up for the residents of East Point. Thank you. I know it's difficult. I know sometimes your job is not easy, but I admire people who are willing to stand up for what's right. And sometimes our concern about what other people think overrides what we should do. I don't know whether to say this fortunately or unfortunately, I really don't care what other people think when I know what I'm doing is the right thing. And I think that's attitude that most of us should have. We should be able to do the right thing. One point of clarification after reviewing the last council meeting's video. A number of things disturbing, but I'm only going to speak on one. And there was a comment that this platform was belonged to somebody else. I believe in giving people the truth, and the truth of the matter is this platform, this podium, this microphone belongs to the residents of East Point who are paying taxes for its youth. And I don't ever want to hear anybody telling me that they can't say what they want to say right here. Because if they do, if they do, I might be tempted to be as unruly and rude as some people have been. I have never, to my knowledge, been unruly or rude to anyone on council. If I have, please correct me, and I'll apologize. I have no problem admitting when I'm wrong. I've spoken on Zoom meetings and in person, and I know I have never been rude to anyone. I may have said some things people didn't want to hear, but truth is not always easy to hear. And that's something that every elected official must be willing to do, hear truth, whether we like it or not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Karen Belts. I've been a resident for over 40 years. I was here two weeks ago to speak in support of Councilman Harvey Curly because of what I felt were some unfair accusations. He was involved in an argument that resulted in a lot of controversy. As far as I know, all of this is very public and has been reported repeatedly in the news. Despite this all being very public, Mayor Owens has declared this as personal business that has nothing to do with this city. I strongly disagree. It has everything to do with this city. When I was here two weeks ago, I never mentioned the mayor's name or the public argument that she is involved in. Despite never calling out her name, Mayor Owens stopped me from speaking after about one minute. Ironically, I came to this council meeting to support Harvey Curly, and I also ended up being accused of assaulting the mayor in a very public forum. I would like to publicly tell everybody in this forum, I did not assault the mayor of East Point. I did not revictimize an assault victim. Those things did not happen. I would also like to request respectfully that the minutes of the September 6th meeting be amended to reflect what actually happened here. I saw those, and it absolutely did not reflect what happened between the mayor, the council, and the residents. And specifically regarding myself, I would like the minutes to document that I was allowed to speak for about one minute, and then I was stopped. Again, I came again today to support Councilman Harvey Curly, also to voice my support for the city council. And I also wanted to thank Susan Smiley from the McComb Daily because I think she's the only one that reported what actually happened. I did see a lot of things that were absolutely not true.
You have 30 seconds.
I was just going to say, I was never contacted by anybody in the news, and I never spoke to anybody from Channel 7, so thank you.
Thank you.
Karen Moragin, East Point resident. I would like to start with personally thanking everyone at the podium here, I'm sorry, the table, starting left to right. First of all, thank you to our city attorney, Mr. Albright, for correcting the mayor in regards to our First Amendment rights and setting the record straight, although sadly, she did not heed your counsel. Thank you, Councilman DeMonica. Thank you, Councilwoman Lucido. Thank you, Councilman Curly. Thank you, Councilman Baker. You did right by us. You stood up for us. You defended our First Amendment rights. You did exactly as you were, when you were sworn in, and you took your oath, and you promised to uphold and defend the Constitution. When you stood up and walked out and left the mayor sitting all by herself, that sent an extremely powerful message to everyone that the violation of citizens' First Amendment rights will not be tolerated. As I addressed in the last council meeting, part of our First Amendment states, "We as citizens have the right to redress our government of our grievances without fear of reprisal or retaliation." It never should have turned into akin to a three-ring circus. It was shameful. It was embarrassing, and I'm not as laid back as everybody else. Y'all know I've got a pretty fiery personality because I dig my heels in, and I always stand up for what's right, and I defend our constitutional rights. I'm looking at our audience, and I'm seeing so many of our senior residents, including Councilman Curly, and what in the world is she doing trying to attack an elderly senior in our community? I won't tolerate that. I defend, I defend the animals in the community, and I defend the rights of vulnerable seniors. We have to come together as a community. And one last thing, since I'm running out of time. If the mayor decides to pull this stunt again, I would ask that the council and city attorney
Your time is up.
end the meeting abruptly. Thank you.
My name is Christine Landino. I've been a resident here in East Point for the last 25-plus years, and I just have a couple things to say. The one thing that I've noticed in the last, let's say, the two years, but especially in the last few weeks, our garbage is not being picked up correctly. We have recycle bins, we have yard waste, and we have our regular garbage. Why is my yard waste being tossed into my garbage can before it goes into the truck? I'm due to get new 32-ounce canisters for my yard waste, but why should I do that if they're just going to dump it into the green can and then dump it into the garbage? So I'm hoping that this October, when you guys are going over the contract for waste management, get somebody that's going to actually do the job, or if they can't do the job, give us a cheaper rate. The other thing that I wanted to say is I'm a hardcore constitutionalist, and I believe in the freedom of speech. And I just want to say, I thank the council for standing up for us last meeting and holding true to our constitution that gives us the right to redress our government. And I'm hoping that you'll continue on this path and keep us residents in mind because we can't let anybody take any one of our rights away. They take one, they'll take them all. God bless you all.
Thank you, Ms. Landino, and we will address your concerns at the end during our comments. Anyone else? Mr. Creach?
Harvey Creach, resident of East Point for 52 years. I do appreciate a lot of things and a lot of times that this city has went through. I've seen the good, excuse me, I've seen the good, I've seen the bad, and I've seen the ugly. And this is a position right now that I take, and excuse me for saying this, but I know all of you people personally. In my last meeting, I was in the hallway addressing the mayor, and she just about demanded, and when I say demanded, I mean demanded, that I address her as mayor. And excuse me for saying this, if she doesn't know she's the mayor, this city's in trouble. I know all of the council, and it's not that it bothers me or bothers my heart to address you as this, but there's something wrong with it. I would gladly do it, as I say at this board, but when we go out, when a person demands this, we've went a little bit too far. And especially the residents up here, as they were talking about the same thing about our garbage waste. I've been watching them too. It's ridiculous. And our ordinance now, the same, I drive in here, I look at all these cars that are parked in a park, you know, and yet I stopped in here not too long ago, and I heard they were going to start walking the streets. Well, get, excuse me for saying this, get some people, and even if you have to put it out again to some residents of East Point that want to see this city grow, get better, and do this. Say, after 52 years, maybe I'm going to say the same thing. Maybe I should just start demanding, like some other people do. Yeah, let's all demand this because we don't get it done. I mean, I'm sorry, I'm trying, I'm trying to relish this when I say it, and I really appreciate what the residents had to say, and the garbage is ridiculous. Three out of the last five weeks, I've watched them take the grass, put it, why? We're paying, you know, we're not getting what we're paying for. And I say, I appreciate all these residents, and I said the same thing about it. I'm trying to remain with a little bit of composure.
30 seconds.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Creach.
Hi, Cindy Federley, East Point resident. I want to commend all of you for the actions at the last meeting. And I do want to reference a meeting of March 22nd, when the mayor stopped me from my comments, which I did not realize at the time was illegal for her to do, and nobody stopped her from interrupting what I was saying. I want to know if this should happen in the future, what actions will be taken? Whose job or responsibility is it to stop her from interrupting the hearing of the public? She threatened to remove a citizen at the last meeting, to have her removed for speaking up, and I want to know, does somebody have the authority to remove the mayor if she's behaving inappropriately? I think I would like a response to that from someone. If that comes from the attorney, I don't know. But I do want to say that I think that there is some discrimination by the mayor against elderly because she's referred to me as being old enough to be her grandmother several times in her comments to me. I don't see where that's a negativity, but she seems to think an elderly person doesn't have the right to an opinion. So anyway, we deserve better. There's no excuse for the behavior at the last meeting, and we need to do better. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Federley.
Hi, I'm Cassandra Ford, 1-815-0777, East Point, Michigan. Listen, elections are what you have when you decide that people haven't done a job for you, not coming to a podium and battering people who are not here. I do not like that. I do not think that represents the city of East Point well. If you got issues with the mayor, election time is when you decide those. We decide then whether they represent us or they're not. Same thing with the city council. I don't come up to this mic to give them accolades. If they're doing a good job, and I got something to say, I'm going to call them and let them know. And if I don't agree with what they're doing, I'm going to call them and let them know. And then at election time, I'm going to vote. I'm going to decide who I'm with and who I'm not with. But we are a city, and we are all in this together. So right now, she is the mayor of East Point, and we need to honor that, whether we like it or not. We need to honor that, and then when election time comes, if the citizens of East Point want to get rid of her, we will. And if we don't, we won't.
Thank you, Ms. Ford.
Hi, I'm Michelle Chapa. I live here in East Point. Everybody calls me Shelley. I'm also a member of the VFW Post here in East Point, 6782. And I just wanted to mention a couple of programs that they have for youth. What, the first program is the Voice of Democracy Essay. It's a program for ninth through 12th graders. The top prize for that national is $35,000 scholarship for school. There's also a program for Patriots Penn, which is for sixth to eighth graders. It's a 300-to-400-word essay, and the grand prize for that is 5,000. Both contests encourage young people to examine Americans' history and where they fit into it. Also, they have a Teacher of the Year Award that any student, faculty members, resident can nominate a teacher, and that's also a national award for that. And the reason I'm bringing it here is because the deadline for these programs is October 31st, and I haven't been able to get into any schools to let them know, so that's all. If anybody wants any more information, I have some here. There's also information on the National VFW website. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else wish to be heard at this time? Anyone else wish to be heard? Close the hearing of the public, and we will move on to item four, which is approval of the minutes.
Madam Mayor, if I might, Councilman, you had mentioned about two dates of minutes. I'm not sure I understood what you were talking about.
Oh, sorry, earlier from our last meeting, since we didn't vote on anything, there were two sets of minutes on our last meeting. I was just saying, we just need to vote on them at some point and approve them.
Okay, Madam Mayor, if I could continue, I had a short conversation with you today. The minutes did not reflect what happened at the council meeting. And I understand sometimes the person who wrote up the minutes reluctantly doesn't know what we're talking about and trying to second guess, but as an example, it said that the mayor had a discussion, quote-unquote, "with the three speakers." Madam Mayor, that wasn't a discussion. That was a railroad, a freight train running over our citizens. So I'm not going to vote for the minutes tonight. I'd like to see them changed and tell them what really happened, that the mayor cut them off and humiliated the residents. And the other one is, oh, I don't have any information, let me, that the council exited the council table. I would rather say the I would rather say the council, because of the attitude that the mayor had, that the council walked out, because of her attitude and the treatment to the residents. So, Mayor, that's my only opinion. Obviously, we're not going to sit here for a half hour and change all the wording, but I would like to postpone the approval of the minutes until the administration changes that and brings it back at our next council meeting. That's it.
Can I make a couple of comments to them before we table it?
Yeah, go ahead.
I was just going to say, just at the end, I think, just for notes, for revising them, it should just list the four members of council that left by name, and then also in the last sentence, it should say something more like, "The meeting ended whenever the mayor left" or "adjourned the meeting," because a meeting can continue without a quorum, just no votes can be taken. So, I just wanted it to be more specific about when it ended. I think the time, according to our attorney, was correct, but just revise it to say, like, either when she left or if she had adjourned it after we left, one of the two.
Mr. Albright?
Mayor Protem, thank you. I would recommend then, I actually drafted the minutes to reflect what had happened, but if the council believes that there should be more specificity in there, then I would recommend that the members indicate what they specifically would like and send that to city administration, so those could be incorporated into the proposed minutes, and then those could be brought back before a meeting in the future to actually vote on.
Okay, yeah, my only, my biggest concern with the minutes was just that Councilman Curly's point of order wasn't written down. So, I think because that was actually acknowledged, his point of order, that it should have been definitely recognized in the minutes.
And there also is a video record of what transpired at the meeting that's on the city's website. But generally speaking, the minutes reflect generally, it doesn't get into what speakers of the public talk about, so it's a very general recitation of what happened at the meeting. But if the council wishes to have more specificity, then I would recommend then that the council members make recommendations and just put those in writing to the city administration, and we can work on getting those revised and then a proposal brought back before the city council for a vote.
Okay. So, if I can just get a motion to table the minutes with...
I'm not done yet.
Oh, okay.
I'm not done. Excuse me. I'd kind of like to know, and my suggestion, when the wording that city attorney made, that there was a discussion between the mayor and the three people that were at the microphone. Would the council agree, at least agree on that? And I'd like to hear from you, if you want to speak, that it wasn't a discussion, it was a, she railroaded and humiliated the speakers. Would the council at least comment on that? It sounds like I'm the only one. If I'm the only one, one out of five people, they're not going to change the minutes just because I don't like them. I'd like to hear from everybody.
I do agree with Mr. Albright to a certain point, that it's more of just like overview. But I do think it should be acknowledged, like, when Ms. Belt spoke, I believe the mayor stopped her speaking at a certain time, maybe reflect that, because she didn't get the full three minutes. So, I don't know if we need to go into complete detail on everything that happened, but I think every time the mayor spoke, within the minutes, it should be documented, because there was an exchange of different people speaking. So, like, Ms. Hall-Raiford spoke, then the mayor spoke, interrupted her, and then it went back to Ms. Hall-Raiford. I don't know if we need to go into detail about what each person actually spoke about, but it should be reflected every time someone spoke.
Mayor, when in the hell are we going to start? What word do I want? Not hell, when are we going to stand up, stand up and defend ourselves and defend the citizens against this person? When somebody, when somebody reads those minutes, five, 10 years from now, they're not going to know that she was out of control. No one's going to know that. No one's going to know the humiliation that the three dedicated citizens we had at the table, Mayor, that what happened to them. And the minutes, if it's just going to be a, then why bother? Why bother with the minutes if we're not going to tell the truth? And what's wrong with being in detail? What's wrong with having details of what happened? She was out of control, and what she did to the citizens of our community. They weren't going to say anything to her about herself, nothing. They weren't going to talk about the PPO or the assault, nothing. And by the way, you can talk about as much as you want about a police report if you want to. Once that police report is put out there, that's public information. So, she was wrong on that, too. I said enough. I'm done.
Councilman DeMonaco?
I was just going to say, I mean, I agree, certainly discussion would not be an accurate representation, for sure, Councilman Curly.
Yes.
So, yeah, I'm in favor of something more specific, I guess, or, you know, something more accurate, I guess.
I mean, I'm not, no, sir, 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 you're out of order, sir. You'll have another chance, sir, you'll have a chance to speak at the end of the meeting. I'm sorry, continue, Mr. DeMonaco.
I think that's all.
So, yeah, I mean, whatever you guys decide to update the minutes, I mean, that's fine. I was just, I will definitely review them, and if they're accurate, support them. If there's more detail, it's not going to affect anything, so. But can I get a motion to have administration update the minutes and put it on the next agenda?
So moved.
Well, I'll support it, because then I'm going to vote for the revised minutes, but I'll certainly vote to have them revise the minutes. Doesn't mean I'm going to vote for it, but I'll second that motion that they need to change them.
Any more discussion?
I was just going to say, Mr. Curly, just, you know, email Ms. Walton and Mr. Albright with their changes between now and then, and you can be more specific, and we'll see what they look like at the next meeting.
Okay.
Motion and support. Can we please call the roll?
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lucido?
Yes. Moving on to item five, we have no scheduled hearings. And six, unfinished business, we have no unfinished business. Yes, so, yeah, I know, I was thinking about the unfinished business, and I was like, really sure the items that we missed last week, but not under unfinished business, but that's what I was thinking. So, anyways, item seven, we're moving reports from administration. And we're going to start this evening with a report from our city manager, Ms. Walton.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council. I'd like to actually start off and introduce our new deputy city clerk, Ms. Robin Underwood. She's back here joining us, so please welcome. Robin has joined us and really started off in the last couple of weeks very quickly in preparing for November, so we're very excited to have her onboard, and she's done a fantastic job since joining us. So, with that being said, it would only be right that I highlight election stuff, so if you're open to be, being an election inspector, stop by the clerk's office, say hi to Robin, and sign up. And then, if you're not registered to vote, you can stop by and register there, and then there's also information on the website to register to vote as well. ACDC, the Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission, does have an open call for art submissions through October 7th. So, if you're an artist or you know an artist in East Point or Roseville, please encourage them to submit their art and join the ACDC Art Show coming at the end of October, which I'm sure Mayor Protem will talk about more. We have a Clean City Initiative, so we have been working in the last several months, twice a month, going around and cleaning the community together. So, we ask you to join us for the Clean City Initiative this Saturday at 10:00 PM. We all meet at DPW so that we can get our materials, so join our efforts, or 10:00 AM, I'm sorry, thank you for the correction, 10:00 AM, please not PM. So, grab your coffee in the morning at 10, before 10:00 AM, and meet us to help clean the city. We're also in the process of the water meter upgrade, so if you haven't done so yet, it is mandatory, please get in touch with DPW as soon as possible so that we can get you scheduled and get your water meter upgrade. It is quick, easy, painless, and SLC is incredibly friendly, including our DPW staff, so please get in touch with them and get it registered so that you can get your water meter exchanged. And then, I'd also like to take a moment to highlight one of our staff members, Nick Sage, our deputy fire chief over at the fire department. He has just last week received his State of Michigan Professional Emergency Manager certification, so he is an official professional emergency manager. So, I'd like to highlight Nick. He has worked for the city of East Point for over 20 years. We're incredibly grateful for his service and his continued efforts in educating himself to serve the community. So, thank you, Nick, and congratulations. And if you have any other questions, mayor, council, I can certainly answer those.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. Does any of council have questions for the city manager at this time?
Sure, I have two questions.
All right, Councilman DeMonaco?
Yeah, Ms. Walton, one about people can still sign up for trees in the right of way, it looks like. We've been posting a few more times about it.
Yes, I believe Joe Marucci is covering the tree program.
All right, so if anyone wants one, and let's talk about it for one second, there's shallow roots, and the trees are not going to, you know, everyone asks, of course, about sidewalks, it's going to, it can be planted in your right of way, and so if you don't have a tree in your right of way, do it. It is very nice. We get some, we get them all through Relief still, right? The Relief, the, I think, Darren, you're shaking your head, yeah. There's a nonprofit called Relief, we get them through, so if you want one, please get one. And then, my other question was, when are we scoring the medical marijuana facilities applications?
Mr. Albright, did you want to take that one?
Sure, I'd be happy to. I just spoke with Ms. Holman prior to this evening's meeting, and she is going to be speaking with city administration tomorrow, and they're going to, city administration's going to provide me with a date. It's probably going to be sometime the early part of October, we're already at September 20th, obviously. But once I have that date and time, then I will be sending out written notice to all of the applicants and their representatives. It's tentatively going to be on a Wednesday, I believe, Ms. Holman, 2:00? Yeah, it's traditionally been 2:00 here in the city council chambers on a Wednesday afternoon, and so we should have that date tomorrow, and then again, another written notice, and it'll also go out on the city's website.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions for Ms. Walton? Then we'll move on to an update from our finance director, Mr. Blum.
Yes, Mayor Protem and council. I just want to let you know that the DWSRF loan was closed on August 29th. The first draw against that project was put in, the money's already been received. The first $2 million of that project will come from a state grant, and then we will start dipping into the loan that has been approved. So, that is moving along, and hopefully, we'll get going quick on that one.
Thank you.
I'll have.
Any questions for our finance director at this time? Then we'll move on to an update from our city attorney, Mr. Albright.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Lucido, and members of council. Our office is working on several ordinance amendments, including amendments to the council bylaws, and also the group home ordinance. Those will be brought before the city council for consideration, most likely the second meeting in October. Mr. Erie is going to be seated here for the first meeting in October, and he's known about this, actually, for quite some time, and he's agreed to be here, so you will have him sitting here at the council table at next meeting. And then, of course, council's in receipt of our monthly status report. It is considerably shorter, it seems to be getting shorter as each month goes on, thanks to city administration on helping, assisting in getting some of these cases resolved, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the members may have.
Thank you, Mr. Albright. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Albright at this time? All right, then we will close all reports from administration and move on to new business. And we're going to start with item A, approval of a purchase of a 2022 Caterpillar Model 306 mini excavator with attachments.
Madam Mayor, I would move to purchase a 2022 Caterpillar Model 306 mini excavator with attachments from the MyDeal contract number 071B7700084 from the low bidder, Michigan Cat of Shelby Township, for a total amount of $107,126.47.
Second that.
Motion and support. Any good conversation? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lucido?
Yes. And then we'll move on to appointment of, to the planning commission.
Mayor Protem, I move that we appoint Jeff Lubek to the planning commission with a term to expire 12/31/2024.
Support.
This is motion and support. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
No.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes. And then we'll move on to item C, appointment to the housing authority.
Madam Mayor, I would move to reappoint Leo Lalande to the East Point Housing Authority with a term to expire 10/1/2027.
I'll second.
This is motion and support. Any discussion at this time? No discussion, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lucido?
Yes. And then we're going to move on to item D, and that's receive and file the city manager's review.
Mayor Protem Lucido, I move that we receive and file the city manager review.
I'll second that.
Motion and support. Any discussion at this time? If not, can we please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Moving on to the next item, massage therapy business license for Bella Touch at 16583 Ten Mile Road.
Madam Mayor Protem, I'll motion that we issue the massage therapy business license for Bella Touch located at 1658310.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion at this time? We'll move on, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lucido?
Yes. And then our next item is tax reverted policy, or tax reverted properties policy review. And Councilman DeMonaco put this on, so at this time, I'll give him the floor.
Sure, thanks, Madam Mayor Protem. I just wanted to review this, you know, we passed this policy a few years back, and just wanted to kind of review what we've done since we've passed it, and I just had a few things in here, you know, I just wanted to review the current policy, which is included in the agenda packet, the status of the properties that we've purchased since we've adopted it, you know, the whole point, and actually, if I just scroll down here real quick, you know, we had an ad hoc committee, you know, you were on it, Councilmember Lucido, and they determined, you know, it was created, you know, we were creating this policy for the purpose of, you know, acquiring foreclosed properties to, one, eliminate blight, two, improve stability in the city's tax base, three, encourage employee residency, four, provide opportunities for homeownership, did I say five? I meant four, no, five, bolster community reputation, and then, you know, it talks about some details in here. Basically, you know, we want to make sure that we can control these properties in our own community and improve them. So, I just wanted that on the agenda, so everyone's reviewing it again, and then, if I scroll back up here, let's see, the, so we talked about, of course, this U.S. Court of Appeals court case at a recent meeting that kind of affects this, it's all been kind of complicated, of course, and we've had quite a few different discussions. And then, just reviewing, again, the results of the process from this year, if we could, and then, I see, I think, city administration had recommended no changes in the current policy, but I just thought if anybody had any ideas, I know sometimes at meetings, I think it seems like some ideas have been suggested, so we might as well discuss them at some point in time, so I thought now would be good. And I think that's about it. I know that's a lot, but if city administration could maybe review some of the contents of the, of your update here, I think that would be nice.
I do have one thing to add, too. So, the appeals case right now, it has not been finally decided yet, right? That's in the courts right now over the tax reversion properties?
That's correct.
So, I do think that after that's decided, that we should come up with another group and update this policy. I do think at that time, when that's done, that we should move forward with updating
I do think at that time, when that's done, that we should move forward with updating the policy, because it's gonna definitely change some of the items on here at that That's all I have. Anyone else?
Could city admin just talk about the properties we've purchased on here?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then the results of the auction from this year?
Ms. Holman wants to update us on that?
Absolutely. And Mayor Protem, if I might suggest, whatever ruling the court makes, and of course, it'll be appealed, but then the state law will most likely have to change. So there's some, several factors that have to go into place.
Yes.
So I did list the properties that have been purchased, and most of them, actually all of them in 2020. Treasurer did not foreclose in 2021. City administration had the authorization to bid, but only to a small price, and lost out to the buyers. We have met the owners, the purchasers of one. They've already been working. I believe they've already put on a new roof. It is going to be a rental property, but they are pulling permits. So Furwood has not yet been offered for sale. That one had squatters, trespassers, and we had an eviction, so that one was not offered for sale since that time. Roxanna is currently under work. Community Housing Network purchased that one. Redmond Habitat renovated and sold to a first-time home buyer. There are a couple that you see that are, Donald and Normandy have been approved for purchase by Habitat. There's a second Normandy that was actually in horrible shape, was completely flooded, but it was waterproofed and completely redone, and again, another first-time home buyer. Lincoln is underway by Habitat. We did purchase a commercial property. It's a two-unit just up the street. One side is an office, and the other side is completely gutted. It's down to the cinder block, and there's not even a floor. It's just wood slats with sand. So that one, we need to come up with a plan. Then there are three vacant lots. Those were all offered for sale by closed bid to adjacent owners and were awarded to the highest bidder on those.
Thank you.
I had one more question?
Yes.
Sure. Councilman DeMonaco? And what about the properties that, from the agreement with Concierge Management Services? What's the status of those properties?
So two of the properties were finished and were sold through a Realtor to home buyers. One property is about 90% complete. Two properties are maybe 30% to 40% complete, and two other properties, no work was ever started. Those are all on hold right now due to the pending litigation.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have anything? All right, then we'll move on to the next item, which is Macomb County Treasurer, Second Chance at Right of Refusal. Do you want me to ask, do you guys want to update from administration about that, Ms. Holman or Ms. Walton?
That'd be good.
So the treasurer had its first public auction, and the only properties it sold, there were five houses, and one residential lot was purchased. There are five residential lots that are up for the second public auction. Unfortunately, at this auction, it's considered a no minimum bid, so they are charging $100 per parcel. They will be batching them if the city, so the city does have the option to buy them for the full amount that is due, or one or all. So it listed from $2,000, which was the lowest bid, $2,031.63, to a total of $17,178.3. The city, again, this would be through the, basically, the right of refusal. It would be for the full amount that is due. If the city does not purchase these, they will be listed in a batch for auction to the public. So all five would be batched at a low bid of, starting bid of $500.
Wait, what was that last part? A starting bid of $500?
$500 for the five properties in a batch.
Oh, 100 each.
100 each.
Yeah, okay.
Starting bid.
Yes, sir.
So what happens if nobody buys any of these properties then, even in the second auction?
Actually, I don't know what the Macomb County Treasurer's practice is. The state law says that they automatically revert to the city after December 31st unless the city declines them in writing.
Reverse to the city for the $17,000?
No, it would reverse for the city for no cost, but we would have to pay that back.
Yeah, in the second chance where there's no minimum bid, any property that is sold for less than the taxes due, a bill will be sent out to all the taxing authorities for their prorated portion of the, let's say, under collection. That's one of the reasons we're really not interested in buying it for the $17,000. None of the lots are in an area that we're interested in, and about half of that is East Point money. The other half is other entities. So if they all sold for 100 bucks, we're gonna be on the hook for about $8,500, but we won't have to pay the other 8,500. That'll come out of somebody else's coffers.
Okay.
So if we just make a motion that we pass, we don't want to be involved with this, there will be no cost whatsoever to the city.
Yes, sir.
So I, Madam Mayor, I'm gonna, so moved, I wanna, I'll make a motion, get it on the floor, that, I don't know how to word it, we refuse to be involved with the vacant lots. Yep, the mayor's gonna give me, I mean, the city attorney's gonna give me the right wording. That's okay.
There is a recommended motion at the bottom of the worksheet.
Okay, I'm, okay. All right. Motion by, oh, I would move to authorize the city administration to notify the Office of the Macomb County Treasurer that the City of East Point declines the second right of refusal opportunity. Thank you.
This motion is a for. And Councilman DeMonaco, you had comment?
Yeah, I think I had to clarify, I think, a couple of those last statements we talked about. So, well, this motion means we're not going to buy them for the $17,000-ish back taxes right now. And then they're gonna go to the second auction with Macomb County with no low, well, the $100 low bid. And then we were saying, so obviously, if somebody, well, yeah, what are the two scenarios, basically? So somebody, say someone buys a property and someone doesn't buy a property, what are the two? Because we're saying if someone bought it for $100, we were still on the hook for something? Say that again?
So they would be offered, all five properties would be offered. And if somebody, my assumption is that they will go for more than 500. There has been some interest in vacant lots. But if they do not sell for the 17, 17, 178, so any difference between what they sell for and the $17,000, we would have to pay about half? To the county treasurer to cover.
And then what if nobody bought any of them?
And if nobody buys any of them, the state law says that they automatically revert to the municipalities after tax day unless the municipalities decline in writing to take the properties.
And then the county would just keep them?
This is why a lot of counties have land banks.
Okay, because, yeah, I was, well, in my head, I'm just thinking if we let them go to the county, is the county gonna cut the grass and all that? And if we charge them, we'd end up racking up a huge bill? And then would we end up needing to buy it one day anyway? And I just kept getting in an endless loop, I think, when I was thinking about it. We haven't done this before.
Right.
We've always bought them, so we've never gotten to this point of the situation.
Well, I don't, I don't know if I would be inclined to have city administration refuse them at that time. I think I would rather take them, we're already gonna be paying for them, are allotted that we owe, and then try to sell them to adjacent homeowners like we have in the past.
Sure.
So I think if we get to that point and we, they revert back, I wouldn't want administration to decline it at that time.
But we still have administration, we still have vacant lots that we still have from the last purchases. Is that true?
Yes, we do have a handful of vacant lots.
So we still have a handful of vacant lots. So why are we, why are we even want to be involved getting this next five vacant lots? I just want to make sure that my motion, and I asked you this, and you said, no, my motion indicates that there will be no cost to the city at any time whatsoever. Is that true?
I don't think that is true, from what the administration has told us.
Well, I'm, okay, then I'll ask our city attorney.
Mr. Albright?
Thank you. What this motion is doing is it's just saying that the city is declining the second right of first refusal. Then at some point, the city may have an opportunity to have them revert back to the city, and that's when Ms. Holman was explaining that the city could decline that, and that's when the property then would stay with the county, and the county would have that. So this is just saying that the city does not want to participate in the second right of first refusal phase of this process.
I just want to make sure there's still an opening, that we're not gonna get stuck with anything, let alone $17,000, if we don't want the property.
There's a possibility.
And that's a possibility.
Possibility the city could acquire the properties if no one bids on them after the city declines to exercise the second right of first.
And for how much?
Mr. Blum?
I don't have the exact number parcel by parcel, but approximately half of that would be the city's.
So, Mr. Curly, what they're saying is that even if we don't take the properties, we would have to pay that money. Even if we don't take the properties, we're gonna have to pay a certain amount of money for the ones that don't sell.
You know, I, I won't say it, but you know, you know what we're getting, audience. No matter, you know, we're just, it sounds like we're just going around in a circle. If we don't do this, we gotta do that. But if we do that, we don't have to do this. But at the end, we're still gonna get screwed, and we're gonna have to buy them.
Well, and Councilman Curly, I was just asking all the questions.
Excuse, excuse me for, I'm sorry. I didn't need to say that.
I just want, I'd rather us have them, own them than the county, because then we can control cutting the lawn and all that, you know? Otherwise, we're counting on the county or whoever else if we didn't end up having them in the end, you know, that sort of thing.
And who said that if the county owns them, is that, Kim, are you the one that said the county would not be required to cut the grass?
The practice is that county treasurers do not necessarily take care of the properties, which.
Why not?
Which is why they created the land banks. Macomb County does not have a land bank. They may turn them over to the state land bank.
Well, this is kind of like.
I give up.
Well, Councilman, this is like when I was quoting the Carl Levin's book, you know, that he was talking about, they had to demolish, in the '70s, I think it was, homes that HUD owned because they were not taking care of them. So, you know, local, the local, well, the most local board, I think, to me, is gonna be most likely to take the best care of them, so. But, yeah, we don't, that's not at this point.
Do we even remember what the motion was? It was so long ago?
Yeah, yes, I think we do.
You better.
Yeah, I think you better restate it.
All right, the motion was to authorize the city administration to modify or to notify the Office of Macomb County Treasurer that the City of East Point declines the second right of refusal opportunity. So I do have a motion in support. Is there any more discussion?
Who supported it?
Councilman DeMonaco, I think.
Was me?
Yeah, I thought I had that right. So I have motion in support. So can we please call the roll?
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lucido?
Yes. The next item is to receive and file the City of Harper Woods master plan update.
Mayor Protem, I move that we receive and file the City of Harper Woods master plan update.
I'll support that.
Any discussion at this time? Motion in support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
The next item is removal of a Parks Commission member.
Madam Mayor, I'm gonna give him my personal feelings, and I hope the council agrees with me. They're suggesting that they remove a member of the commission. And on our packet here, the motion says the name of the person. I don't like that. We don't, I don't know her, and I'm surprised, I'll be surprised if this council knows her. We don't know her personal life. No, yeah, she missed five meetings in a row, but I don't know why. But I'm willing to go along with the request from the Parks Commission to remove her, but I don't want her name to be put out there tonight. Why would we do that? Does she have cancer? Does her husband have cancer? Or she's having trouble? I don't know. So, Madam Mayor, I'll put a motion on the floor, and if it's agreeable with the council, that's fine. I said, I would move that the city council approve the recommendation of the Parks Commission for the removal of said member.
I'll second that.
Motion in support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
The next item is designation of funds from the American Rescue Act, and I'm going to give the floor to Mr. Blum.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and Council. I would like to run through some information real quick before you begin your discussion. The American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, or ARPA, was an unprecedented act which distributed federal funding to states, counties, municipalities, tribal governments, health authorities, public transportation entities, healthcare providers, and public school districts. In total, almost a trillion dollars has been dispersed through grants to over 100,000 entities. As with all federal grants, each entity is required to report the federal funds received, how it was spent, in compliance with federal regulations, and provide documentation that is acceptable with those federal regulations. In the case of ARPA, this reporting is required quarterly. At the federal level, this means that over 100,000 quarterly reports have to be reviewed for completeness and verified that everything meets federal regulations. The feds will have to spend resources following up with entities to correct any mistakes or shortfalls that they find. They also have to audit these reports, and if compliance is not met, they are required to recoup the grant funds from those entities. The feds do not have the staff to handle such a burden. A rule was put into place that any entity receiving less than $10 million can report this simply as revenue loss. The reason for this is that if every small entity were to do this, two-thirds of the reporting requirements would be finished immediately. The feds strongly encourage that the under $10 million grouping make such a designation. East Point received $3,371,351.19, so we are in the under $10 million group. If council tonight follows the feds' encouragement and designates our ARPA funds as revenue loss, I can make one final quarterly report, and we are done. If council deviates from this option, quarterly reporting will be required until all of the funding is spent on the designated projects and could continue through 2026. Additionally, any year an entity receives 750,000 or more in federal grants, that entity is required to conduct a single audit. This generates a cost above regular audit fees. The single audit requirement will continue until the quarterly reporting is complete, even though the funds were received in fiscal year 2022. If council designates our ARPA funds as revenue loss, we are still free to spend those funds on ARPA-authorized activities. We just won't have to do the reporting requirements. Or council can shift these funds to city needs which are not ARPA-authorized, such as funding local streets or some other need. Please keep this information in mind as you have your discussion and decision-making tonight. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Blum. And we will start discussion. Does anyone have anything that they would like to say or make a motion?
Yeah, one question.
Councilman DeMonaco?
Well, so where's this information in the packet that you're just reading? This is not in the packet?
It isn't. It's just something I wrote up this afternoon.
I mean, if you can provide that to us, that would be nice.
Okay.
I guess my general comments on this is I think that Congress passed this so that it would be spent on public health reasons, as of course, we had a pandemic and obviously greatly, you know, changed things in the whole country. I think that we should be focusing and spending this money on public health needs. Now, after what Mr. Blum said, I think we don't necessar, or we could go about this in a creative way where I think we should discuss how we spend the money. We could, to the U.S. Treasury, say that we're accepting it as revenue replacement. But I think that we should allocate the funds for different things, like replacing lead service lines or, you know, potentially like an opioid task force or maybe some more hazard pay or something like that and not just simply just take it into the general fund. That's my general thoughts.
Well, my major, my main concern is that I know that these funds were already incorporated into our budget and therefore I don't know if we have the funds to add more things and, you know, to purchase more things at this time unless we cut things out of our budget right now. So if I'm mistaken, Mr. Blum, could you clarify that?
The fiscal year '23 budget has half of that, or about a million six, and it is revenue. The other half came in the prior, well, it actually all ended up coming in the last fiscal year because we got it just before June 30th, the second half.
So I think right now I would, I would definitely be leaning more towards just revenue replacement and then having that discussion during next year's budget.
I think that makes sense, too.
Sounds good.
That we can discuss it in the next budget, yeah.
So if I think if we do that, you know, we'll be looking at, well, just keep in mind when we get to this next budget, you know, roughly if things stayed the same from this current fiscal year to next fiscal year, we'll have a deficit of almost 1.7 million. So like this is one-time money and that's why I thought, you know, we need to, to me, replace lead service lines as quickly as possible. And that's a one-time thing. Once we replace them all, we don't need to do it. A lot of different things are like recurring for all of time, right? Water and sewer infrastructure, roads, you know. There'll never be a day where we're like, yes, every road is perfect and we'll never need, we'll never have another pothole again, so.
Right, and I mean, I agree that getting ahead, usually getting ahead on infrastructure when we can is a priority. And that's why, I mean, that's something I would definitely look at for next year's budget at that time. It's kind of late now within the year season to do anything anyways.
Well, sure.
Anyone else have anything else to add? Councilman DeMonico?
Doesn't seem like, a motion of mine might be a waste of time, it seems.
All right, well, I just moved that we designated, designate the ARPA funds as revenue replacement in the amount of $3,371,351.19.
Support.
I have motion and support. Can you please call the roll? Sir, sir, at this time, at this time, could you, you'll have, sir, sir, you'll have an opportunity to speak, but you can't speak at this time. You have to listen to the. We, yes, we'll take a 10-minute recess.
Hello? 10 minutes?
10 minutes. If everyone could please take their seats, we're going to continue with the meeting here. And we're going to move on to the last item of new business which was added tonight that I added, and that was the mask policy. The reason why I added this is, you know.
Mayor Protem?
Yep.
Did we get an official vote on the, I don't think we finished the last item, I'm sorry.
Oh, we didn't? Okay, so can I get roll call on the designation of funds for the ARPA?
And I hope I'm correct. I have Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Curley.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lucido.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico.
No.
Okay, then we'll move on to item K, which is the mask policy that I added tonight. The reason why I added this is, you know, with COVID, I know that Macomb County is still high. So right now, when we originally made the policy, we were required to wear masks whenever the county was at high risk. And with how things are changing, a lot of places aren't requiring masks anymore. I was just wondering if council would be interested in maybe changing it to, still having the mask out there for anyone who is definitely interested in wearing a mask, whether it's high, low, or medium. It doesn't matter. That's their right to wear a mask whenever they want, but I'm just changing it to make it optional.
Optional for who? Your answer for us.
For us and the audience.
So no matter if it's high or the disease start coming really, really bad, we still would have the option of wearing a mask or not wearing a mask? Is that what you're saying?
Right, I mean, if the CDC changes things or something, we can always go back and update it again. You know, we don't have to stay at this, you know, with making it optional. We can always go back to requiring them at every meeting.
So what, so now you just said we can always go back. So what do you, what exactly kind of a motion do you want?
Well, I was just thinking that right now, I know that Macomb County's been fluctuating between medium and high. And so I just wanted to know if council wanted to continue when we were high with keeping the mask policy where everyone wears a mask at the meetings? Or if they would be maybe okay with changing it where people could wear a mask if they want, but they don't, we don't have to require it, not requiring it anymore? Okay, well.
I'd have to read out more on the current CDC guidelines, I think, to.
All right, no, that's fine. It was just, it was just something I was considering, thinking about, so. All right, so we'll just move on to the next item, which is payroll and bills. We're going to start with the payroll and bills from September 6, 2022.
Madam Mayor Protem, I'll motion we pay the bills in the amount, well, for September 6, 2022, in the amount of $3,591,474.25.
I'll support that.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lucido.
Yes.
Councilmember Curley.
Yes.
And then item B is the payroll and bills for September 20, 2022.
All right, and I'll motion to pay the bills for September 20, 2022 in the amount of $3,250,309.58.
Second.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lucido.
Yes.
Councilmember Curley.
Yes.
All right, and now we're moving on to item 10, which is the next hearing of the public. Anyone that wishes to be heard, if you could step up to the podium, and you will be given three minutes.
Mary Hall Rayford, East Point. There was a mention of voting and since I am a precinct delegate in the city and political activist, I want to encourage everyone that when you have candidates on the ballot, one way we can be assured of getting the right person in office at any time is to vet the candidates. I think far too often, we don't bother to do any research on candidates. We don't know their backgrounds. We don't know their stances. And after they're in office, it's a little too late to complain, quite frankly. But I think if we do the work ahead of voting, we can save ourselves a lot of time and anxiety. So I would seriously consider, encourage rather, everyone to vet the candidates that are on the ballot. Know who they are, what they represent, and I guess I could say an informed decision. And I know this is not a school board meeting, but I would encourage anyone who's interested in running for the school board to please do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Crace?
I'll address this. Thank you, Mayor. And maybe this will not insult the injury, but as I said before, too. And maybe this will not insult the injury, but as I said before, too, as far as addressing and the council. Going through this, I say, just writing down a few things, and there again, too, I don't know if I have to address this to the per se, but Mr. Cardy said about trees and the right of ways. What, I mean, what are we going to do with this to the effect? Is this for the personal houses, or is this for the main roads, or exactly what this is for? It wasn't described. And the thing about it is, is in the right of ways, first of all, who's going to trim them? Second of all, when the roots tear up the sidewalk, which even you're saying low, and third of all, what happens when they get in the sewers? I like trees as well as anybody. Matter of fact, I had three big maple trees in front of my house, but I had to cut them down because of all these incidences right here. People don't trim them. In the city, I mean, the same thing about it, there's a few of them out there right now, people have got to me and asked me and told them, they parked their car in front of their house or somebody else does, and it tears their mirrors off or something, they call the city, and the city doesn't come out and trim them. Excuse me, I'll just, I'll start with that one. And I said, on the ordinance committee itself, too, to me, it's no longer in function, because we haven't had a meeting in so long that I don't even know what it does anymore. So I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I don't know about the other members, you can relinquish it. And wax and shine. I put this down there, I don't know if this is going to sound good or it's going to sound bad, but I got to say, those ordinance cars and the rest of the stuff in the parking lot, if the people, there again, too, I just had this discussion more or less with the assistant manager, they do no good at all if they're not used. And you, you know, you can talk about something like we do, we can talk something to death, but that doesn't get this city any benefit whatsoever. We have to get something done. Like garbage on 10 mile road and the same thing at a bus stop, it is ridiculous. It's embarrassing to me when I go around that corner. It's garbage. What, who, what time does anybody pick it up? Are they scheduled to pick it up? Okay, and I'm saying, for an update on the committees themselves, you know, when you receive them, and for members, you know, I mean, the people don't even know what the committee is or what the committee does.
You have 30 seconds.
Okay, thank you. And as I said, the five city plots that we were talking about, I thank you, Mr. Curly, about talking about them, they still have to be maintained one way or the other. No matter who gets them or what happens to them and the rest of the stuff, that's why at the present time, if we don't maintain what we've got, we've got nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Mr. Upers?
Larry Edwards, East Point residence, addressed the council. Lots been said within the last couple of weeks as well as today. I, too, am in disagreement with a lot that's been going on, and I hate personal attitudes when it's, while dealing with the city business as well. I hate liars, favoritism, racism, and on and on and on. And I find nobody completely innocent with this council, because I've been around long enough to know that each one has some problems. When we're dealing with the city business at hand and what have you, the basic, basic stuff can't even be done. It was mentioned, I think Harvey just mentioned it as well, about the trees. I would encourage anybody that's considering getting a tree, to talk to somebody that already got a tree. You get absolutely nothing done. I got one in front of my house, but then the next door neighbor got two, and what have you. Ask us about what happens with the tree, who's looking after the trees and what have you, that's on city property. Unless you are fortunate enough to have somebody or connected enough to have somebody come by and look at and come out and do something and everything, then you may get something done. I lived in other cities and what have you. The cities always, when they, when they would allow a business to come into the community or to start their business, there was a petition or something, I always went out to the residents as well as the business to okay and prove this. Council just didn't go and make decisions up on their own to approve whether or not this would be acceptable in that community. But council is just approving everything that they choose so fit to choose and what have you, whether it's destructive to the community, no matter what type of business it is and what have you. You're allowing everything, a community that's being destroyed and tore up just for a few pennies and what have you, and I've always been against all this here. You can stop calling this a family city and what have you, a town, whatever you call it and everything, that hadn't been for a while. When you allow drugs and when you allow all kind of other things to come in this city and everything, that was gone and what have you. People just standing out on corners.
You have 30 seconds.
And, 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 and you walk by, you get high and what have you. And so this, this suggestion got out of hand and got crazy, a lot of emotionalism here, and people just, this council is something else.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to be heard? Mr. Chukubieke?
Yeah, Walter Chukubieke, East Point resident. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, council. I heard today on the news that the president said the pandemic's over with. And then the CDC echoed the same message. So it's over with, hallelujah. I'm going out and celebrate tonight. But 2,400 people a day are still getting COVID. So why is it over with? So you can take that with a grain of salt.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to be heard at this time? Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Carl Murphy, I live on Juliana, and my wife is, she's beautified this city with her house, she loves flowers and, but our neighbors behind us have weeds growing on the fence, they starting to be treased. And, and they're going over to my yard, you know, taking the trees and suffocating the plants. What do we do about that?
Sir, we can't answer you at this time, but if you want, you can give your information to Ms. Walton, and then we can definitely look into that for you.
All right, thank you.
Does anyone else wish to be heard? Anyone else? Ms. Moragin?
Still Karen Moragin, still, East Point resident. So, back to the First Amendment and the public comment period, it's for three minutes for the individual to speak interrupted. That means elected officials don't interrupt, nor anybody else. These aren't joint statements, you don't have two people at a podium, that's why we're called individually to speak. We did receive guidance back from the Attorney General in regards to the so-called mayor's violation of our First Amendment rights. And what they are recommending is that we file a complaint and request an investigation with the police of the violations of the Open Meetings Act that occurred. The investigative report would be submitted to the prosecuting attorney for the county in which the public body serves. So, we already have the complaint filed. I am respectfully asking Director Rohib, would you kindly instruct your detective to continue with the investigation of Monique Owens in her official capacity as a public elected official who violated our First Amendment rights? We're requesting that investigation continue until its completion, and then forward it over to our city attorney, Mr. Albright. We are not going to stand for a minute for our First Amendment rights being violated. This is a democracy we have. We have thanked the council, Mayor Pro Tem, and our city attorney for doing right by us, for defending our First Amendment rights, because unfortunately, the last four years at the national level, we saw all kinds of horrendous things happened.
You have 30 seconds.
With so-called elected officials who are trying to destroy democracy, overthrow our government, and replace it for autocracy, we, the watchdogs of East Point, won't tolerate it. Thank you very much for defending us, thank you very much for standing up for us.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard at this time?
Good evening, Pro Tem, Mayor, council people. I've been coming up here for the last few weeks, and me, myself personally, everybody does have the right of speech, but I feel the fair has been attacked personally by some members of the citizens, some members of the council. Maybe I would like to state that there is a council of bylaws where the mayor has some control over the meeting, so maybe if the lawyer might represent to the people, what, what does that actually mean when she has law for the meetings? Is she in charge of the meeting, or the citizens in charge of the meetings? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, Cindy Federley, East Point resident again. I do want to comment on the minutes of the last meeting, and I agree with Mr. Curly, that they should reflect that First Amendment rights were violated, which is the reason for council leaving the meeting. I think that's important and needs to be in those minutes, in the documentation of what happened. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Federley. Does anyone else wish to be heard at this time? No one else wishing to be heard, I'm going to close the second hearing of the public and move on to mayor and council reports, and I am going to start this evening with Councilman DeMonico.
All right, thanks, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. Just, first of all, hopefully you maybe all saw it in the East Sider and/or Macomb Daily that our schoolhouse turned 150 years old, and it's awesome if you have not been inside of it, it's got a brand new floor, looks nice, it certainly does not look 150 years old. So if you can get a chance, check it out, our, our great judge Kathy Galen put the event together, and there were quite a few people there, Mayor Pro Tem was there, Councilman Curly was, well, they were asking about you, I think you were supposed to have a speech there. He had another prior engagement for it, but that was very nice. And then it was also nice to attend the Veronica Block Party in tribute to Jeanne Trice, you know, resident that a lot of you know, and has come out to meetings and such, and been involved in the community, who passed away somewhat recently. It was cool to see a band out there, they were very, very cool. That's what their name was, they don't have a name, they just jammed together, I would have never guessed, so that was pretty fun. If you were thinking about putting a block party together, do it. It was nice to talk to a whole bunch of people, ended up going to high school with someone's daughter that was there and all that, and, you know, never met him before, and met a whole bunch of other people, so if you're thinking about it, do that, that was a lot of fun. And then also, let's see, yesterday was a meeting for, well, called the Parade Committee, I guess, that has put the Memorial Day Parade event together, and in discussions right now for a Veterans Day event, so if you're interested in either of those two events and helping plan those, let me or the Mayor Pro Tem, Sarah Lucido, know, we're both on the committee, we'd be happy to see you there. We, we could use, I mean, anyone's help, you know, if you're interested in doing that, please come out. Let me know, I can let you know about the time and date and all that of the next meeting. And then upcoming on September 29, the East Point Rotary is doing their harvest wine and beer tasting at Drew's Garden, 5:30 to 8:00. Tickets are 25 ahead of time or 30 at the door, so if you want to support the East Point Rotary, check that out, and I can help you with the details, too, if you need any. And then earlier, we talked about trees for a second, just want to bring that back up. So the, the trees we now plant are not going to be the gigantic, gigantic ones that are messing up sidewalks right now. Now, like DTE and the city and everybody finds different types of trees that are not going to be the ones that screw up the sidewalks, screw up the water and sewer infrastructure. When I was saying shallow roots, it's not going to dig into your sewer system and mess with that. I have one of these trees in my right of way, so I have put one out there, so, you know, I, I don't believe it's going to mess with my sidewalk or sewer infrastructure decades from now, because I believe we've got a list of trees that will work right. So that's, that's what we're doing, nobody wants to live in a community with no trees, right? I mean, just drive down Grashit right now, and it's pretty weird, I don't know how else to put it, that all of the giant trees are gone in the median in Roseville and Grashit now, you know, they didn't have really a way around that, and they've planted new trees, but obviously they're not going to be as big as they were for decades now. Let's see, also, and I mean, so we're all, you know, part of a community and country here, and we all, you know, we all, you know, the law applies to all of us, and I think it was good to see in New Mexico, where a judge ordered the removal of a county commissioner who was part of the insurrection, you know, I think, you know, we shouldn't have people in office rising up against their own government, so I think that was good to see, hopefully we can, you know, continue doing that, and just hopefully people just support their country and community as opposed to rising up against it. And of course, part of that is the First Amendment, and, you know, obviously that was talked about here today, you know, anyone can come up and, you know, talk about whatever they'd like at hearing the public with, you know, little exceptions, you know, not, not too many exceptions. And, you know, I would certainly agree, last meeting, there, there was nobody talking about anything that would fall under one of those exceptions. And, you know, I hope we can just have as smooth a meetings as we do here today, and I think one, one thing I'd just like to say for sure is just because someone was elected up here, you know, any of the four of us, or, you know, our fifth member who's not here today, just because we were elected doesn't mean we can't be critiqued. You know, you're elected, you know, no one is disputing the results of our local election, we all know who we are being elected up here, but it's your First Amendment right, it's, you know, my right, too, to complain about other government officials, too, throughout, you know, other than, you know, well, I complained to these guys up here, too, you know, about things, we obviously don't vote the same way every, for everything, today we, you know, today alone, we didn't all vote the same, you know? So, that's what I just hope, I hope we get up here and just like agree, or, you know, not agree, get up here and debate the issues, come to some agreement, and just keep moving on, and, you know, I'd hope that anyone can come up here and say whatever they want, you know, at the podium, or email us with their thoughts, you know, as the Constitution says in the First Amendment. So, oh, and I guess to that point, I think, Ms. Federley, I think, was the last point, none of us, I don't believe we can remove another member from the council, city administration or others certainly can't remove any of the members, like, from a meeting or whatnot, the five of us are just going to have to work together here and figure out what we can do to get the business of the city done. So that's, that's it.
Thank you, Councilman DeMonico, and now we'll move on to Councilman Baker.
All right, thank you. In regards to the concern about the yard waste and garbage, that's been kind of a ongoing discussion, so that's a continued thing that we, I think, all witnessed at some point or another, so we're trying to work through that and see what we can, what we can do in regards to that. Also, just to speak on a few things that happened in the community, last Thursday, we had a gleaners' distribution at East Point Middle School. We, I believe, served, I believe it was enough for over 100 families, and we were, we had given everything out in about, I believe it was less than an hour. So that's always good, that needs are being met in the community. And I want to say congrats to Nick Sage on his accomplishment, and I've had the opportunity to sit down and talk with Nick on several occasions, a great guy, really has a heart for this community, and I actually got to go to the firehouse just last week to have a conversation with a couple of firemen, and it's always good to just recognize just the hard work and the dedication that they have in the community, we need more of that, and I'm appreciative of just what they do and how dedicated they are to trying to keep us safe. And to everyone here, I just want to encourage everyone to make it a goal to do something kind for someone. kind for someone else. And that's something that I try to practice. I learned it from someone else, is to always make it a purpose to do something kind. So it's a self critique that I have of myself. What did I do? And whatever my increments of time is, whether it's one week, one day, whatever, what have I done to help someone else? So I would just encourage everybody else to do the same. And that is how we make improvements, not only in our communities or in our families, but just in the world. That's all I got.
Thank you, Councilman Baker. Councilman Curly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had one item that I was going to talk about and I will, but I guess I'm going to talk about why I wasn't at that event, since you had one side of the story. My wife and I have a daughter that has lived in California for 32 years. So for 32 years, we never had a chance to have Christmas together or Thanksgiving together or birthdays together. And so they moved back to Michigan about a month or so ago. And we've already lost one daughter from leukemia. So this is the only child we have. And we were invited to their house for dinner. So it came to a choice of me going to an event that I'm sure was a lot of fun or having dinner with my daughter. So now you have both sides of the story. The other one is, I'm sure every one of you, well, I shouldn't say every one of you, 99% of you drink something out of a can or a bottle that is a deposit bottle, right? And so you begin to collect these cans or these bottles and you take them back and you think you have a lot and you end up with a buck and a half. Well, you already know, oh my God, five policemen just came in. I didn't do it. Holy, whoa.
Maybe we can be removed.
Yeah, there's six. Wait, whoa. All right, well, let's go on. Anyway, the friends of the library do a lot of things with that money that they get when you bring a can or a bottle to the library. They do a lot of wonderful things. So I'm asking you again, you know, 10 or 20 cans or bottles, you're not going to go broke. So what? But that money accumulated with hundreds of other bottles and cans and it ends up being hundreds of dollars really helped the library. So if you don't want to go over there, call me. I'll come pick them up, put them on your front steps and I'll come pick them up. Otherwise, just take them over to the, to the library. Had a library meeting this morning. And let me just tell you how popular our library is. In the month of August, now get this, 4,749 people visited our library. Yeah, that was 1,730 more than last year that they visited this year. So they got something going, folks. If you've never been into the library, stop watching, stop watching some soap opera or whatever. Get in your car, go on over to the library. And if you don't want to take anything out, just walk through the library and see what the hell it looks like. I mean, it's great. It's great. Can you imagine 4,749 visited the library in August? So, Madam Mayor, that's it.
Thank you, Councilman Curly. So first of all, I want to respond to Mr. Ford about the trash. I am very aware of the gas station that you were referring to. I know it's been an ongoing problem, especially along 8 Mile with trash. We do try to have our parks contractor, NDPW, go out there and pick up trash. It's really hard to keep up. And then we've also been doing the city initiatives. We've been trying to go throughout the city. It is amazing how disrespectful people are when it comes to disposing their trash. I mean, we try to put garbage cans out. We have garbage cans along 8 Mile. Why people don't use them, I don't know. But I will definitely make sure that our building department goes to check out the gas station that you're referring to because I know it has been an issue. And then I would like to take a moment to acknowledge Kimmy Rich of our Elections Department. She retired this month after 30 years of service to our city. She has been a dedicated employee and very well loved by all the city employees. And I just wanted to give her a shout out, congratulating her on her retirement. And then as Ms. Walton mentioned earlier, the Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission, they are going to be doing an art show in October. They are looking for people who are interested in submitting artwork. You can go onto our city website or our Facebook page. The information is there. We also have flyers throughout our lobby on how to submit artwork or you could just head into City Hall and ask someone and they'll help direct you also with that. You can submit up to October 7th. It's a great event. We're going to have a great open house. Everyone is welcome to come out. I believe the open house is on the 20th of October. And we're going to have, you know, some cocktail, you know, some light beverages and snacks for everyone. So hopefully everyone can come out and see some of the great artists within our community and from Roseville. Also, as Councilman DeMonico mentioned, we are looking for volunteers to help plan the Veterans Day event that we do and the Memorial Day Parade. So if anyone is ever interested in joining and helping plan those great events, the more help, the better we can make these events. Please contact Councilman DeMonico or I and we would love to give you all the information moving forward with that. We are planning on doing a Veterans Day event at the Military Museum. They have offered to let us have it there and that will be on November 11th at 6 o'clock. Hopefully everyone can come, make it out and take time to recognize all of the veterans. I think the last thing I want to do is I just kind of want to make a quick comment about the last meeting. And that is that I think it's important to know that the chair of the council meetings has a duty to protect our First Amendment rights of all of our residents at the hearing of the public. Citizens should be able to express themselves on any topic they wish, including criticizing their elected officials. Criticize me, I understand. I'm not going to, everyone's not going to like me. I understand that we're not always going to agree. It is, it is our job to listen to them, even if the things they are saying that we don't agree with them. Going forward is my hope that the chair will allow the public to freely express their concerns so that we can consider their input and focus on addressing the issues that face our city and continue to move our city forward. And that is all I have this evening. So if I can get a motion for adjournment.
So motion.
Support.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem, Lucido?
Yes.
Motion, meeting adjourned at 8:54.